Hi Chris, just one second.
Sadly, all that's left here is a bunch of them. All that's left here is a bunch of walnuts.
Hi Chris.
All right, I will call our meeting to order. We will save the reading, the regular scripts until we reconvene in an open meeting again, but I will confirm, Chris, you can hear us?
I can.
Very good. So, and everybody else is in the room. So, we will open the meeting and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to reconvene and open.
I'll move to, move to executive session with the intention of returning to regular session when complete to consider the memorandum of agreement of IAFF law for 1947 as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property if shared to players at an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of a party, namely one summer street.
Second?
All in favor of Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Time a yes as well. So, we are now in executive session to discuss two things that David just mentioned. So...
Thank you.
And.
Hold it there.
Superbowl, isn't that cool?
Very cool.
As a preliminary matter, this is select board chair Jeffrey Swamberg. Please permit me to confirm that remote members can hear Chris. Can you still hear us? Very good. And we can hear you. Fantastic. Good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted both in person and via Zoom. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. Agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by a video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you. And take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the meeting recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials are available on board docs. And we recommend that members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I had notes otherwise. Before we begin, for maybe to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude the remarks. So we'll go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide. Comments, questions, or motions, please hold until your name is called. Further, if you're participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. For all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in call with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Items with public comments after members have spoken, chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes each. Thank you very much. Now let's turn to the first item on the agenda, which is the pledge of allegiance that hopefully drives.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your father. We got this.
We'll start with public comments. The board would like to hear public comments. If there is any further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if they are available to within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. And so we will start with public comments in the room if there are any. Please come on up and just. Towards speak towards the owl wherever you want to stand or sit is fine. And if you could please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Brown for Grant Street. I'm here with Deborah Sell and Diane Gauthier. I'll be brief. I know you have a very busy agenda this evening. We are part of the senior center focus group, which is an 11 member citizen committee. Working with the COA director, the council on aging board. And the friends of Maynard seniors. We are staunch advocates for the 3,000 plus Maynard seniors that we have in town today. And have taken on the select board's challenge to explore long term solutions to serving our town seniors. One of our tasks is to facilitate the growth of the senior center, both in space and in programming. To do so, it has become very clear that the current senior center has no room for expansion. And cannot meet the growing needs of today's seniors. We must relocate to a facility with a much larger footprint and with safer access. To that end, the senior center focus group. Has spent the last seven months exploring different possible locations in town for. That would serve as an active and engaging solution to this issue. We are holding two informal tours. Of one space at 6 million main suite 100 and would like to extend an invitation to the select board. And also to other interested Maynard citizens to join us at one of these sessions. We will tour the space this coming Thursday. January 5th at 11 a.m. And again on Monday, January 9th at 2 p.m. This will allow us to share with you and with other citizens. Our suggestions, our ideas and our vision for an expanded interim facility for the seniors of Maynard. The entryway to this suite is adjacent to the knowledge beginnings daycare center. Just along the driveway off Walnut Street next to the asset river. So it's pretty easy to find. We do have a copy of our flyer. It can be found on the friends of Maynard seniors Facebook page. Printed copies are posted at Market Basket, Middlesex Bank. The town library and the senior center. And we've also put one downstairs on the bulletin board. We hope to see you there and thank you for caring.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
I'll just note for the rest of the slide where there was a request from the group to put a presentation onto our agenda. I wanted to make sure that the council on aging had a chance to review the materials before it came up to us. And I know that they didn't have a quorum at their December meeting, so they're going to be on the agenda for the COA January meeting. And I asked the administrator, make sure it's clear that we want a. A full representation from the COA so that you can get a full appraisal of the work that you've done very diligently over the last seven months. So just wanted to give everybody an update on that. So I'm looking forward to seeing that once, once it goes through the further conversation and hope that your tour goes well.
Thank you. We have flyers.
My question, my question about the, and I guess it's probably again, maybe it's better for the meeting is. Is the cost of the, of the space that you're promoting?
There are two options that we're exploring. One is a five year lease. One is a 10 year lease. So it depends on the length of the lease. Square footage is probably four to five times what we currently have, which would allow more than. 25 seniors at a time to actively engage in classes and programs. The programs now are so limited in the current senior center that it's often only 10 people at a time. That can engage in an activity and it's just not meeting any of the needs of the seniors.
Okay, but you don't, but you don't know them.
I don't have a printout, but we could send that for your next package.
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, again, like chair of the budget subcommittee, so well aware of. The budget limitations. And so if we can figure out a way to, you know. Figure out money, then you know, obviously that's, that's.
Always the bottom.
It really is, unfortunately.
Fortunately, my schedule will allow me to be at either one of the two. Or is there an opportunity to just like knock on the door to, to one of you guys and say, hey?
We could schedule an evening or late afternoon.
Okay.
Session. They usually keep it locked up. I noticed tonight that it's fully lit, so. I didn't arrange that, but you can act, you can go down that driveway and look in. It's an entire suite. Room after room after room after room versus. What we have now is a half a square foot per senior in this town.
Just curious, does it have kitchen facilities?
They will add a kitchen and private bathroom for us, no charge.
I have a square foot per senior meeting that you've got a thousand square feet.
1500.
1500. Okay.
The state mandate is, that state recommendation is four to five feet. Per senior and we have six inches. So we're.
And how many seniors take advantage of the senior center? Do you have that number of the individual? Unique?
Amy would have that.
Yeah.
The numbers are skewed because the space is so limited that if we run an art class.
Yeah.
They can only take 10 or 12 and there may be 40 people that say I'd like to something else.
Okay.
They're in less.
Okay, last I knew it was about 200 for a year. So, but, um, okay. All right. Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments from within the room? Are there any public comments online this evening? All right. Very good. Oh, and we will move on to item number four, which is appointments. And we are going to start with the appointment of two new firefighters and I'll introduce chief Stowers. Would you like to come up and introduce our new firefighters?
We're, we're, we're in two of fire, but it's actually. Didn't get around to swearing in, which is my fault. But this is the first time we've done this in person.
Yeah.
You guys since. Kind of exciting. I'll introduce Travis Grove. Travis, you've been with us for a little bit and should have more than earlier, but you didn't. And Dylan Mahoney.
Good evening.
Hi.
Would either of you like to say a few words?
I'm just pleased to be here and thankful for the, the opportunity and time for that.
Fantastic.
Yeah, same. I'm happy to be here. Yeah, just excited to work with the town of Maynard. I guess know the town a little more and give what I can.
Well, we're, we're happy to have you. We're glad to have you join the team. We're glad to have you join the new fire station too. So not only a good team, but a good physical location for, for you guys to be in. And so looking forward to, to working with you. Any?
Either of you guys?
We're actually both from Hollis.
Both of you.
One's bigger than the other.
Yes.
Don't stand up here because it makes me uncomfortable. It doesn't help.
Very good. We need, we need, I think we need, yeah, go ahead, Justine.
So I'll move to appoint Travis Groves and Dylan Mahoney as firefighters to the fire department.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Sorry, Chris, did you have a comment?
No, no, nope.
Thank you. Take a second.
Very good. Oh, sorry. All right. Very good. Please.
I'm on.
Mr. Grove, will start with Travis. Repeat after me. I Travis Grove.
I Travis Grove.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the United States of America.
And allegiance to the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the constitution and laws thereof.
And will support the constitution and laws thereof.
I Travis Grove.
I Travis Grove.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As firefighter for the town of Maynard.
As firefighter for the town of Maynard.
And will obey.
And will obey.
And be bound by such laws.
And be bound by such laws.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
As are or may be.
As are or may be.
From time to time laid down.
From time to time laid down.
For the government of the fire department of Maynard.
For the government of the fire department of Maynard.
I Travis Grove.
Travis Grove.
Hereby accept the position firefighter.
Hereby accept the position of firefighter.
On the fire department of the town of Maynard.
Of the fire department of the town of Maynard.
Congratulations.
I'm just impressed already because I've forgotten so many of those words.
Right here. I Dylan Mahoney.
I Dylan Mahoney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
For the United States of America.
For the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the constitution and laws thereof.
Will support the constitution and law.
I Dylan Mahoney.
I Dylan Mahoney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a firefighter for the town of Maynard.
As a firefighter for the town of Maynard.
And will obey and be bound.
And will obey and be bound.
By such laws.
By such laws.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
As are or may be.
As are or may be.
From time to time laid down.
From time to time laid down.
For the government of the fire department of Maynard.
For the government of the fire department.
I Dylan Mahoney.
I Dylan Mahoney.
Hereby accept the position of firefighter.
Hereby accept the position of firefighter.
Of the fire department of the town of Maynard.
Of the fire department, town of Maynard.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes.
All right. Very good. We have one more appointment. We have appointment to the zoning board of appeals. It's, I don't see page on either. Do we have somebody from the board of appeals? She. Oh, no, go ahead.
Unanimously before. The appointment of your consideration to be a full member.
She's been actively serving as an, yeah, active as an alternate. But yeah, so. And, and we have her materials from when she applied as an alternate as well. So I think. I'm, I'm comfortable moving with the recommendation, given that he's cleared for us for the initial. Appointment as an alternate and that she has gotten the endorsement from the current zoning board of appeals. Any, any other comments or questions on the motion in front of us?
No.
All right. Very good. Well, I will entertain a motion in that case.
I'm, I will, I will say it, but I'm afraid I don't know how to say her, pronounce the last name.
Oh.
Okay. So I'll move to appoint Paige Taviga to the zoning board of appeals with a term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So congratulations Paige. Yeah.
I sent a note from Paige and she said she apologized for couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
At home, but she, she said she could join in a few minutes, but I'm going to tell her that.
That's absolutely fine. And if she wants to pop in and say hi, that's fine too. Jump out of the current moment or in between items. Either way, it's fine by us. All right. Very good. Moving on to item five. Uh, moving on to item five, we have a common victular license. I believe the schools are switching vendors for. I'm sorry, I didn't know what that people was switching vendors and so. Um, that's that's pretty much it, so we simply need to approve the common victular license for the new food vendors for the schools. Any additional information?
Uh, no, I think all the application materials were submitted and. Uh, I did invite uh Whitson's to attend. I invited Scott and we thought we'd extend the invite to the manager. Perfect.
Scott Berry.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Uh, could you quickly introduce yourself and then just give us an overview of what we're looking at here, please?
Sure, my name is Scott Berry, so I'm a district manager for Winston School Nutrition. I oversee thirteen districts throughout Massachusetts and New Hampshire. So uh we um won the bid, obviously, to to come in and serve the Maynard community. Uh, starting in this past August, um I know we have Sue Mitchell Tang who is with us. She is the general manager running the day to day operations. Uh, for the three schools, so we've had, um, we've made a lot of changes. We've done a lot of great things for the kids. Our focus is to. Obviously, you know, continue to provide healthy um and um. A lot of choices for the students to to increase participation. Um, Whitson's is a a family owned company. We are uh growing exponentially lately, so we are expanding. We were initially in the New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts areas. Uh, we're we're expanding now into Pennsylvania, Alabama, Wisconsin, uh and have since acquired um smaller companies. Um, throughout the the growth, um, you know, to provide more to our schools and communities.
Any questions for uh Mr. Berry?
Probably just a uh. A formality issue, but are there ever any occasions where the schools would have the need to? Have permit to sell or to use this license uh after three o'clock? I see that there's there's hours of operation of seven to three, and I wouldn't want you to be in violation of a permit. If there was an event in the evening that the schools happened to be utilizing your service. And if that's the case, how do we get around that um relative to making the permit valid? I don't want to limit. Op- opportunities at the school to three o'clock. It's basically it.
So currently, we're we operate, you know, during within that time period only. Uh, the only exception to that would be, you know, we do provide. Um, in-house catering events, so whether it's partnering with uh the PTO, for example, if they had event. That were, you know, using the facility or within the schools, uh and they requested us to us to provide catering services, you know, meaning. Food refreshments, snacks, those types of things. Uh, that would be the only exception, but our our service in terms of feeding students breakfast and lunch. Is is primarily within that seven, seven AM to three PM timeframe.
What you captured is exactly my concern is that I don't want to limit the opportunity to allow for any organization that might want to utilize. Your your services outside of that seven to three window. Um, so we can always, we can always amend it down the road if we choose to, if we learn that it becomes an issue. But um something to think about and to perhaps uh, no. Come back to us if you if you feel a need, but I don't, I don't want to limit the community. With an opportunity to utilize your services in the school.
So I have one one thought on that, and I'm sorry for interrupting.
Nope.
Is you too, but so it's it's very well conditioned for you on the on the sort of application form. It does say conditions set by the license, which is here. Perhaps you could say. The timing of the services or or we have to figure out maybe the better wording. I'm have it's been a long vacation week, but um you can say something to the effect of. Um, in accordance with the terms of the contract, because I imagine that they their their contract stipulates when they can serve, when they can't serve, and then and this should be in accordance with that. So if there are contracts allows them to do, you know, more than three o'clock, whatever. And I I would hope that our, my expectation, I guess, is that our our license would match that, not nothing beyond. But I don't know what the contract says, though the contract doesn't let them serve after three o'clock anyways.
Uh, we they can always do a one off extension too. We need to, right? So I think if they come to us for more than one one off extension, then we'll just see if we can make it permanent at that point.
Oh, no, do we typically do one off extensions on common vics?
We don't, and I mean, like, that's that's an extra level bureaucracy that only probably wants, but.
Correct.
What's the uh, Mr. Berry, what's uh, what's your contract saying when it comes to timing? So is there any limitations?
No, in our in our contract, there's no limitations. I mean, we're we're given the operating hours, you know, in terms of school service. Uh, and again, catering is really above and beyond, um, you know, our contract with the major public schools, so. Currently, you know, currently, we we're we really don't do any types of catering, you know, outside that timeframe. Um, really, anything that we've done up to this point has been within the school hours, so to speak.
Okay, so then I don't want to make an issue where it's not an issue. I wanted to prevent one from happening down the road, so if it's not going to be an issue, I'm fine.
Okay.
And I will move to approve a common victular license for Whitson at the Fowler School at Three Tiger Drive, Maynard Math, Green Meadow. School at Five Tiger Drive, Maynard Math, and Maynard High School at One Tiger Drive, Maynard Math.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much, uh, and good luck and have fun serving food to kids.
Welcome to Maynard.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have for item six, two municipal naming. Naming nominations, we're gonna get the alliteration correct, uh, both from uh David Mark, who's here in front of us. Um, we have a municipal naming nomination form and policy, which I was not aware of, so we have that up there for the board's review and for the public as well. Uh, let's take these one at a time. Why don't we start with one thirty eight Acton Street, uh, at which the proposed renaming is to the Marble Farm Park? You want to speak to that?
All right, so I'm David Mark, um, Ten Maple Street, Maynard, Massachusetts. I know there are two new parks in town. Um, one of them is the one on Acton Street, Jersey, which is basically. Uh, adjacent to the Acton River Rail Trail, um, across from Christmas Motors. Um, this was a historic site. Uh, originally, um, occupied by the Marble Family, who moved there circa around seventeen oh five, so one of the earliest settlers of the area. Long before Maynard became Maynard. Now, I'm saying that because the criteria. Uh, that the select board sets for naming something includes that someone's who is could either have been a town official. Or a person or person to have done significant volunteer work for the town. The Marble Family was here. Um, hundred and seventy years before Maynard was Maynard. And actually, by the time it became Maynard, um, a marble daughter had married a Whitney and a Whitney daughter married a farm manager, so the family in residence. Was the farm manager, but for historic purposes, this is the historic site and park, including the foundation of the original house. The proposal is the Marble Farm Park, which was discussed and agreed upon by the Maynard Historic Commission. Uh, so I think I've tried to explain where the name came from, criteria for it, and how it doesn't quite fit. The criteria that was set by the select board. It's. Um, guidelines. So if there are any questions or comments?
Questions or comments on the Marble Park Farm One?
Not really. I mean, I I. I realize that that's our criteria, and I looked it over, I think yesterday, um. To double check, but we can deviate from that.
Well, I believe it's our policy. We could reset the whole policy if we wanted to, which I don't think we want to, but I think I think if we do deviate from our own policy, we should have a justification. Not too dissimilar from the ones that we were just provided.
But it's like criteria, compelling facts, or circumstances that would justify the town's ongoing and permanent recognition. I mean, that it would fall out of that and that's a criteria.
Very good.
And I think there is uh. In this particular instance, there is a uh. A recognized, it's people who refer to that location as anything already referred to it as Marble Farm. So whether it's official or not, that is the Marble Farm area.
The Historic Commission felt it was important to give it that name, not just Marble Park. Because then you're saying it's a name, but you say Marble Farm, it makes it more of a historic. Uh, name, so just hope to be um the the better name than just.
Give the name, you have the use of the land as well for that period of time.
I got one question, unrelated to naming, but related to the whole park issue. I thought part of the discussion when we were approving and everything else through CPC, the funding for the park and. Whatever that we were in the agreement that it would not become an official town park. And if that's the case, doesn't really need an official town name.
Well, my understanding is it is becoming an official town park. It is becoming an official town.
Okay, just with no uh maintenance being provided.
That was the exception to exactly that, that the Department of Public made clear at the time of the proposal that it could not provide. Maintenance for it, given its existing budget stack.
Yeah, okay.
Great, but using volunteers to plant flowers, mow the lawn, break the leaves, and risk is relatively basically below maintenance by this.
Greg, can you confirm, or should we go to Justin?
No, that's all right. I mean, so, yeah, Justin, Michael, you have to be very, because David's not inaccurate at all. I think what. Also, I don't want to speak for David, but what I'm gonna hear from a lot of residents in the future is this is a park why I'm gonna maintain this park. So the the. Burbage is really what may actually inspire in the future and cause the issue, so maybe calling a marble farms historic site as opposed to marble farms. Park may actually curb that that conversation later. Um, we were actually um having that conversation in the hallway with residents before. Um, indication of park means many things in national law. So maybe consideration of Marble Farms historic site, Marble Farm. I don't know, something outside the Marble Park, maybe, maybe all more in line with the days.
I guess the question I have is if we call it a park, are we legally committing to anything?
No, that's just a name, but like even in the future, yeah, right, but it's like the impression, it's like the perspective of it is like. Park is park, but like even in Maynard, we have our under the Conservation Commission, we have a park under select board. We have like, the park is not. Maynard already, but um, I think it's a fair fair point. Um, but it's but not, but people off the street would have known the difference between the conservation park and another conservation park in there, so. We're already kind of, kind of already in that role.
Us.
Before you vote, I'll have the Conservation Commission point out that this is not conservation lands, unlike some of the trails, they have the, where the sign says Ask the Riverwalk. Uh, you know, Maynard Conservation Land, this will not say conservation lands, so it's good to be. Both Marble Farm Park, Town of Maynard. On on the two boards, and I agree to create and install the signs, so. Matching the design that we see at Caboni Park and also the trail, two vertical posts, our zone boards, um, inscribed with a name.
Maybe, um. Sorry if I chime into so.
Go ahead.
Is it possible on the signage to say Marble Farm Park?
Excellent. Historic site, as many boards as you want.
I don't know, trying to kind of come up with a cover.
I think, what are you trying to take out the name Maynard? Where it says Town of Maynard, you want that line gone, Greg?
Oh, no.
No, so if I can also add, just remember that CPC funded this project as a historic project. And then the parcel that it's on is technically under the select board. It is not classified or categorized as a park under the registry deed. So this is the situation that sometimes we run into, pro park, you know, go back to the solar and when we're talking about hemisphere, it's not, it's it's a harmless name. The word park, not the Marble Farm. Marble Farm is very appropriate. But the verbiage of park versus non park has a lot of uh legal statutes and what.
I I like Marble Farm Historic Site.
Okay, that can, if that's what the select board approves, I can definitely be what's on the slate.
Feeling it still meets the intentions of the Historic Commission as well, if everybody's happy with Marble Farm Historic Site. Does that sound good, Chris?
Good to me, yes.
Very good, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good.
Uh, then I will move to approve the naming of the Marble Farm Historic Site at thirty eight Acton Street, out of Marble Farm Historic Site.
Oh, second.
Uh, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, the Marble Farm Historic Site is indeed the Marble Farm Historic Site.
Well, there's not, there's still another step in this process. We have.
Is that thirty day?
Publish it, and then there's thirty day window for which people, uh, public has the right to make comments.
Yes.
So I have a question. After that, and it comes back with select board, does it then have to go on the? The town warrant and vote in May to the, with the public?
I don't believe it requires a meeting.
Not it. I, not that I know.
All right. Let's move on to the second one. This is the uh Overlook Park at fifty seven Thomas Street, which was built as part of the development agreement for um. Uh, the nearby units at forty two Summer Street.
So the proposal here is to name this McDonald Park. Um, uh, because it's it's James Jimmy McDonald, who constructed that and several other partners in town. Uh, has done quite a bit towards removing abandoned or deteriorating buildings and replacing them with housing that the town's in sore need. So I just thought that would be appropriate to recognize his contributions on the Maynard. Again, I'll be not a town official and not a person who's can, you know. Produce or or conduct significant volunteer work for the town, but has improved the town by providing rental housing. I think over a hundred units rental housing over the last so years.
Comments on this one?
I don't know yet.
It's difficult when you're talking personalities, especially people that we know. Yes. Um, and. You know, I like Jimmy, and I think Jimmy does some great work with the town of Maynard, um, and has done some remarkable, um. Well. Re. Design of locations and hopefully the one down the street is gonna be just as nice as the other one that he's done. But I'm with Justine and that I don't know. If. We don't have a more uh. What's the term I want to use? Again, I'm not in any way disparaging Jimmy McDonald, my comment. Uh, again, I think he and his family have done remarkable things for Maynard. That's the type of, I'd like to maybe consider a, if we're gonna name it at all, uh. A veteran, a somebody who gave their life for our country, um, maybe a Navy person, just given that it's on the water. Um, and. I'm just not sure if. That name is fitting. Or uh. For Maynard at this time. That's that's just.
And again, as I started off with, it doesn't meet any of the criteria.
Well, that's.
Yes.
Um, you know, we created this policy probably, um, you know, the historic reason for that too was it. Victor, his brother uh was killed in World War Two, wanted to have. A park in Maynard named after his brother, and there was no policy for which to go about doing that.
Yes.
And so this policy sort of evolved from that, and he never pursued it further. Beyond just having made his first pitch. Um. And so that name never came up. He was he was proposing the Coolidge School Playground as uh in the in honor of his brother. Um, and that just never came, never came forward.
And I know you have Tobin Park, Carbone, this Carbone Park.
Yeah.
Which were significant town officials, town volunteers.
Yeah.
They do meet the criteria. I think they work in hindsight.
Yeah.
They they do meet, so they're not exceptions to um guidelines.
Right.
I'm not necessarily saying no, but I'm I'm saying I definitely need another another meeting to think about it. Um, it's honestly uh naming parks until it was on the agenda. You know, because it's not on the agenda Friday, I, you know, it has not occurred to me about naming parks, so I I'd like to. Marble Farm is something that if that's what we've we've known it as, pretty much, that's what we were know, we knew it as with the CPC. Project and everything else for that, I feel comfortable with this. I just feel like I need a little bit more time to kind of. Look at it and think about it.
Right.
Understood.
Chris?
Yeah, I I. I s- I certainly. I s- I certainly agree with some of the others that have spoken that um. Jimmy McDonald is well worthy of um recognition for all the things that he's done in town and the way he maintains his properties and everything else where others. In the past have not, but my, the only, the only point I have and the only thing that is I'm sticking on for this. Is the fact that this particular park that was created was. Kind of a. It's, it's not kind of, it was, he was contractually bound to do it. If you came to me and said, you know, if, if, if the suggestion was that um. You know, out of the goodness of his heart, he took a, a beat up piece of land and created a park and put up, put up all the parking and everything, that's a whole different conversation. Maybe that, maybe that warrants naming a park in that person's honor, but this is. This is really was something that was negotiated. It was a negotiation and this is something the town asked for. Negotiated and and everything else, so it wasn't, it was a little different, even though we paid for it, which I understand it had. It not been part of the negotiation, would it have been done? I guess is my, is guesses, I think is a fair question, and I don't think the answer is yes, to be honest. But that's my only sticking point, although I do agree that at some point. You know, there, there should be some recognition for some of the things that Jimmy's done, I just don't think a, a park named in his honor that he was contractually bound to create. Is that. That one.
Thank you, Chris, and then my own part, I, I, I'm also hesitant here, I think, given, given he doesn't meet. The kind of listed criteria, and I, I don't know that he meets the compelling factor circumstances to push it up in this case, I think if we were to look back, we would find. Other veterans or town officials who, who maybe we want to recognize uh um uh for, for these. Very unique opportunities that don't come up very often, so I think I, I'm not comfortable at this time with that particular one. Uh unlike Marble Farm, which has a, a different history and a different set of compelling facts, so that's, that's where I'm gonna be right now. Uh I don't hear the need to take a motion on that one right now, is there any other comments on fifty seven Thomas Street?
That's a beautiful location.
A little bit underutilized.
Hopefully this will, will spur knowledge of it as well. So, all right. Thank you very much, as always. All right, we will move on to item seven, which is uh the. Um firefighters' union contract. Greg, would you like to give us a overview of this agreement?
First, I want to give um a lot of appreciation uh to. The both sides of the table, so to speak, um for my team, it was Chief Stowers and HR Manager Stephanie Duggan. From the firefighters. And I'm gonna, I remember all the names, but actually I'm not gonna, I feel like I'm gonna forget one. I, I, we refer to each other's first name, I'm forgetting their last names. But. Thank you, Justine.
You're welcome.
Yes, great, okay, so um. It was Captain Par and then firefighters, uh Trader and Portis, awesome. So um. Good, we met with them over the course of, of a number of months, and you know, I had some ups and downs, but I think we came to a great deal for both sides of the party. Uh, the, the union, you know, was looking for a couple of specific things, particularly in regards to retention. And incentivizing sort of promotion, um and they had some back and forth about the promotion procedures. Um, the union also. Agreed to build retro pay, uh which is significant, and, and I want to make sure that is pointed out. They agreed that effective uh January first twenty twenty three was gonna be their, their uh goal increase. Um, so I appreciate their cooperation with their business, and I, I can do a good deal for the town. This, this agreement is only two years, uh and for the, the public's awareness. Um typically, the union agreements, the collective agreements are three years. This is just off um slightly because there was a side letter done. A short while ago that threw off that rotation, but this will put us back on the normal rotation where we do two unions a year. Um, so this, this contract against for two years.
Very good, thank you, any questions or comments on the contract in front of us?
I appreciate the work that was done on both sides. Thank you to everyone.
David or Chris?
Yeah, I'm good.
Uh, yes, I, I agree, thank you, and thank Stephanie and the work everybody put in on this one, I know it was a, a long process, but I'm glad we. Uh have come to an agreement that everybody uh can get behind, so. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve memorandum of agreement with IFF Local nineteen forty seven as presented.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so the contract is approved, very good. Uh, moving on to eight, which are another type of contractor, set of contracts, so we have. Um, well, the first one is a proposal for a broker for the uh old. Uh fire station at one Summer Street, Megan, do you wanna give us an overview of what we're looking at here?
Yeah, the town staff have been working with a working group made up of. Uh, three people, John Kramer, Donna Dodson, and Tara Walsh, who actually just stepped down, but participated in the group for. About a year, um to determine the future of the one Summer Street Park. And so, you know, we're working on a request for proposals for, you know, what we'd like to see at this site. And um one of the recommendations that came out of the working group was. The hope to reach a really wide audience, consider proposals that will best our. So the recommendation was to work with a broker to help. The property. So because we're disposing property in Massachusetts, we have to follow Massachusetts procurement law. Um, so we will have to advertise in a number of places, that's just required, um combine, website. But to, you know, I think a lot of developers don't often look at combines, um or maybe the Metro West Daily News and. Be an opportunity to um pass a wider net to have, you know, qualified developers. Um, you think of our zoning and come up with some creative ideas that they use this property. So. Now I mentioned procurement for the disposal of property, I also went through a procurement. To invest business practices um to look for a potential broker. So I, you know, um five brokers and um. To the tour of the building with them, we got quotes from three. And um O'Brien Realty Firm was the, was the lowest, and we negotiated with them and had our principal look at the agreement here. Uh, we do have a member. So the, you know, the big takeaway here is what does it come down to for the commission and that it's a four percent. Uh for this broker to assist us with marketing and words. I'm happy to answer any question.
Any questions on the proposal or do you want to hear from uh Mr. LeVille?
I have a question for Mr. LeVille, um. I feel like the. Brokering a municipal property seems a little unusual, and I was curious what your experience is with that.
Mr. LeVille, could you just introduce yourself before and then answer the question?
Yes, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, my name is Luke LeVille, I'm with O'Brien Commercial Properties, we're out of Concord, Massachusetts. Um, our office is in Baker Ave, um in Concord. Um, and yeah, to answer your question, um. It is an interesting property to market being a municipal building. Um, personally, I have not brokered a sale of a municipal building or worked with a municipal entity and represented them as a seller. Um, but. We have worked on and our specialty is. Five thousand to fifty thousand square foot industrial buildings in the metro west area. Um, I've represented numerous sellers and buyers. Um, for these types of properties as well as potential investment and then development projects. Um, and so it is an interesting. Property and it's gonna be an interesting project to work on, but um what our. Goal is, is to present the property to as many qualified buyers as possible, bring your town. A high volume of potential offers um from qualified buyers, and then that allows you to make a decision based on. The sale price and potential use of the property, um you know, just. Basically gives you all the options possible to make a decision for what's best for your town.
We're not, of course, we all hope this will be successful and we will have a. Um, a buyer that is. That is making a presentation that is, you know. Meets our, our needs and desires as a community. What happens if we don't find that, what's our obligation? Or any payment or reimbursement should we not find a suitable buyer?
You don't, again, so all, all we're doing is presenting you with potential offers. You don't have to, you have no obligation to accept any of the offers, our contract runs for six months from the execution of the proposal. Um, so we'll show the property, um it could take anywhere from, you know, three to six months to procure offers and. Uh put the, the building under offer, um but. You have no obligation to accept any offer that we present you.
Obligation to accept any offers, but any obligation to pay your firm.
No, no, so again, our, our contract runs for six months, if nothing. Happens with the property, the property does not transact, then no, there's no obligation to pay us.
Thank you.
I, I, I had a question.
Yes.
And the question, it's, you know, and anyone can answer the question that has the answer, um just to know one in particular, my question is. That, given the high visibility of this piece of property in Maynard. And the knowledge held by several local developers today, that this. Piece of property is in all likelihood gonna go up for sale and there's gonna be an RFP. Those particular developers. Are likely to not have any contacts with. O'Brien Properties prior to coming to the town to make offers per the RFP. My question is. In that case. Is the town still obligated to pay O'Brien's fee?
Yes, from the, the start of the contract, um. We start marking the property and um essentially myself and my associate Rob McGary, who's on the call right now. We um, every day, we're, we're, we're calling potential developers, um we're calling potential buyers, we're. Pull, pull, pulling lists to uh come up with qualified buyers for the property, so there certainly are the, the developers who currently know about the property. Um, I'm sure, you know, know it will be up for sale shortly. But um essentially, our, our obligation is to the town of Maynard, and we're servicing, servicing you. And making sure that you're getting the best deal possible at the, the appropriate price point for the property.
Yeah, okay.
So we're, we're representing your interests, so understood that there's certainly developers out there. Who, who um, you know, know about the property and probably have, already had their eyes on it. Um, but we're making sure that you are getting the correct amount and the correct deal for it.
That's. Okay.
I, I, I don't know.
I know, I know, I know that that's the, I know that that's the answer, but. I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned that, you know, my responsibility, responsibility of some of the others in the room. Is to the town of Maynard as well, more so than yours, your responsibility is to O'Brien Properties and yourself, that's who you work for. We work for the town of Maynard and the citizens of Maynard that elect us. My, my real point is, and I know three people that intend to, on day one. Contact the town of Maynard before getting contacted by anyone else and put in. A, a bid for the property and everything else, and, and my, my point just to others in the room is. Why do we need to pay a commercial property broker for that, and? If we need you to tell us what the value of our piece of property is, we aren't doing our jobs very well at all, considering. We've already spent a bunch of money to find out what the value is. So I don't, I don't know that, you know, I'm not being argumentative, but I'm just, it just to me seems like. I know three people that want to do this, they're familiar with the town, they're familiar with our, our principles, they're familiar with everything we do, and they know the pricing. What do we need to pay someone four percent to tell us that when we already know the answer?
So I, I, Chris, I believe, I, I discussed this with the Assistant Town Administrator when, when I was looking at the agenda, and I know that the um. The three individuals mentioned on the reuse committee itself had discussed similar, um Megan, could you give us some of the highlights of that conversation?
Sure, yeah, I think um Chris's point is totally valid, and, and I think that we, we could certainly go forward without a broker. And we've done that. Um, in other, in other parcels that have just moved up. But with, with this working group, their recommendation was to kind of get this on some other folks radar. Have a wider net and um, you know, try this, so that, that was the recommendation and um. And that's why we decided to move forward with this, but it's completely up to the board, if you, if you choose a different path forward. We'll honor whatever you do, I can see both sides of it.
I think, can I, and one thing, this, so with the, with the greater advertising, there's one potential advantage to this approach of having to operate, having a brokerage assistance in marketing. Is, is to have competition, so it's, it's to say that um. Not only does it provide some legitimacy in advocating eventually to town meeting, if you want to go that route, which is positioning the property to say like. We, we really did our due diligence here, we really got a good, we, you know, we didn't just take the usual suspects, we went way outside to try to get the. Best deal, which I think that's what Mr. LeVille was going to, but, but I, it also provides. To be a little bit of pressure to those usual suspects to say like, oh, we are looking outside the box, it's not gonna be the same period, so. I, I would, I would, I would think that this could encourage. I don't know, of, of, a, a second look, I think that they should be, make sure that they really provide an advantageous. Proposal to the town because of the scale of markets. They, they, their opposition is gonna be nationwide potentially. But either way, you're, you're right, it's a lot of pain, even if that goes to the usual suspects that the usual developers that we, you know, see around the area. One potential of this, this approach of having a broker and having this, this wider marketing is that we get a better, better deal proposed.
The other thing I'm thinking of is, as much as. And, and I, I think Chris's point, I understand, and as I said at the beginning of the. This meeting, you know, a lot of it tends to be all about the money, and you know, we're very conscious about it. The other thing I'm looking at is the next item on the agenda after contracts is sixty one sixty three Summer Street, which whatever. Ends up being the disposition of sixty one sixty three Summer Street. So my thought is, if O'Brien is able to catch a wider net. To get some developers interested in our town, coming to see our town in general. And it translates to maybe they didn't get the bid for one summer, but. Then sixty one sixty three comes up, that might open it up to more opportunity um and more. Um, more opportunity for us.
Exposure.
Yeah.
Well, and then. If, if we're not happy with the approach, we've learned something for the sixty one sixty three Summer Street um working group that we're forming as well, so we're, we're. Uh, I think, I think casting that wider net is potentially high value, and, and we'll have a lot more information as we go through that second project as well. If we do it with this first project, so I think there's some benefit. Uh on top of what Justine mentioned, to, to looking at that as, as a setup for fifty one three, so.
Yeah, and I, I uh appreciate Chris's concern.
Yeah.
However, uh having heard Greg's comment. Um, I think that uh. We want to have as many. Various types of opportunities to explore rather than just, if it's three, if it's three, as Greg said, usual suspects. We know what we're getting. I'd like to sort of step out of the box a little bit and see what else might be there, and this is our opportunity to do that, I would say, there with them.
Any further comments or questions on? Item eight A, which is the one Summer Street broker proposal?
Um, to Karen, one, and um, there is a, there is a mistake in the date that's listed, so. If this is considered by the board. Summer nineteen twenty twenty three start, um but it should be. You know, if it's signed, that's when it should start. And six months after that.
Very good, we, yeah, okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? And I will entertain a motion with the correction as just mentioned. Um, to make sure that the start of it is upon signature.
Yeah, I'll move to authorize the town administrator to sign the proposal. With O'Brien Commercial Properties Inc. to advertise and market one Summer Street as presented with the date of uh. Implementation, the date of signature.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Negative.
Very good, I'm a yes, so it will pass three to one. All right. All right. Moving on to eight B, we have well, eight B through E, uh, we'll take these one at a time, but these are um. Related to well for A and I believe are along similar lines that we've seen in the December meetings when we had a few change orders there. Justin, would you like to? Walk us through, we'll start at eight B.
I don't know.
Or is it easier to do all?
So the, it's like the, I'm going to change a little bit where to phase one, hundred and twenty up though.
Yeah, so this is actually change order two for the Associated, uh, Associated Construction Corp. Um. I approached the board last meeting, then two meetings ago with um the disposal hazardous material of the lagoon sites. Which is change order one. So um, there's two lagoon lagoons. Located at our Commonwealth four A. So each lagoon acts as a disposal site for the processes. With uh, within the treatment plant. So the preliminary change order was a unit cost, unit based model, based off of estimates of load. Et cetera. So how much material is on site, but until you start digging it up and actually. The process to solidify it takes fullness in that. So. The original CO one. To approve was based on unit cost and an estimated value. The majority of the work has been completed, but that cost has hit that CO margin. So this is the additional cost to finish the lagoon and hazardous waste removal process. Thus nullifying that entire uh. Entire issue.
Let's, do we want to go through all four and then ask questions?
Sure.
All right, uh, so eight C is change order oh three, well for a water treatment plant. Sandtech, this is oh three, and then there's only four following it.
Yeah, so I'll I'll kind of give you a high view of why there's CO three and CO four. So if you go back um and remember that when we originally designed this project, it was one project as a whole, and then when we bitted out the bids were far over our valuation. Our allocated funds. So we phased out the project. To make sure that we moved in accordance with a permit process, which is phase one. That's the construction company associated. And phase two, which was recently awarded to Winston. So change order three is actually the cost for the construction administration of the design for the entire project. Because there is two phases and two general contractors and multiple different subs, there is more onsite engineering involved. I asked Stan Tech to break that out so that we had a cost valuation so that the board would understand what that excess cost is to having the phase out the project, meaning. What were the implications of the market and how it affected us in this project? So CO three is actually the construction administration cost that was originally part of. The entire project, but because we had to bid it out and we were not lucky enough to have the same general bid and award in each contract. There is multiple aspects of coordination that have to go through generals. Multiple subcontractors working together. So that is why there is a CO three and a CO.
And then there's the contract extension for miscellaneous engineering services.
Yep, so that is, Stan Tech is our consultant service for our water and sewer utility and their contract ends at the beginning of the calendar. So this is an extension to their miscellaneous. Very similar RVHP contracts, so you see the rates.
Questions on these four items? For the DPW director?
The well for a um. Change orders, you know, my question is going to be, are I included in the rates?
Yeah.
Um, that's the first one. The second one is. I get a little jiggy, I guess. Uh, that's a, that's a legal term, I guess. Um, when I see original contract awarded at ninety-one thousand and then now we're up to one point five million. That's a huge differential or delta, as they say in the. The parlance.
So it's, I will tell you, David, it's actually based on how we design the contract. So this is an engineering contract. It's very different than what you would see with like the fire station. So traditional vertical versus horizontal. So that's a procurement term. You, when you're doing vertical, you have like an OPM. Owners Project Manager. When you're doing. Uh, horizontal work, you don't necessarily need an OPM on your OPM. So I represent that. So then the cost factor comes down. But when you're designing a treatment plant, there's a lot of dynamic aspects that include a lot more engineering work and specialized engineering work. As opposed to a vertical where you have an OPM and then you have a design team, which is your architect. And they typically sub out structural engineering because there's not that much of it. So this is a little different. So technically, think of this contract as your OPM and your engineering all in one shot. That's why the expense is that way. And the cost rises, that extra two hundred thousand actually, because we phased it into two projects, even though it's one project. The coordination of multiple generals. So think of. One general is our fire department. Imagine there was two generals there trying to work hand in hand and that coordination is our engineering. That's what brings up the soft costs, so engineering, the soft costs. And with this project compared to other projects that you would see such as MSBA and things of that nature. This is heavily relying on permitting processes through the EP. So there's a constant bombardment and process that has to be checkmarks while we're getting approval from the EP. That's what that overall costs. And the way the contract is designed is that ninety-one thousand was preliminary. Plans and then the second CO was actually full engineering plans, the third CO and fourth CO are contract in design administration. So it's a phased contract as opposed to a large, uh, for a contract.
And my final comment is, um. I'm not being critical, I'm being practical on this. With this comment. We have to approve this because if we don't, we've got a non-finished project. Um, so really it comes to us for a very large change order. That. You know, I don't know. And if if I forgot, I forgot, but I don't remember being told, oh, by the way, it may come out to be one point five million dollars as opposed to ninety-one thousand. Not that it would have changed things.
No, right.
We have to do this.
And I do try to. Let the board know that every contract, specifically when there's contracts in a time like now where the market is constantly changing, is be prepared for change orders. I think I said that at the recent, uh, even the FANC account, something as small as the key. Be prepared for change orders. When you have a, have a dynamic project such as a water treatment plant. And you're actually modifying a treatment plant as opposed to building a new one, it's harder to actually modify a current asset. And we're also dealing with the EP's policy regulations that are cumbersome. We're also dealing with an endangered species habitat and the blending turtle. So the complexity of this actually drives up that engineering cost. Never mind the phasing and splitting of the project, which continues to drive. And get us to that point. Now, I will tell you that during our rate discussions and our borrowing process, when I come to the board with controls and ask for borrows. We incorporated all of these. High level costs with the one, one point five that our allocation in the five million. We had a general idea about where we're going to be. We're still currently under those allocation budgets. So if you look at it as a whole, we're under budget still. Um, I'm not going to say that Winston may not have a change order and Associated Press, I'm excuse me, Winston's team, Associated, Associated Construction Company may have some minor change orders. I don't see any more um significant change orders from Associated Construction. For Winston, there could be change orders because they're doing the internal aspect of the treatment plant. So think of some of the issues that we have at the fire station where there was delay in the materials, specific products. And how you have to adapt to that. That may hit us on the Winston side as well. Uh, but we are in a good location with our overall allocation of funds to support the entirety of the project. These projects, when you start breaking them up like this, become very dynamic. Um, and that's what we prepared. Both financially and our rate process. So I didn't borrow ten million dollars in one shot. We phased it in because this project has been debated there.
I have one question about the um, and and. Um, it is actually more of a procurement question. So is there a problem with the fact that the um? You know, again, it obviously not because we're going to do it, but it that the original value was ninety-one thousand. And then the total contract value has gone up by that much of a percent. If, was there? Is that okay for, obviously according to procurement law?
So technically, it's an engineering service. Well, this is why it's exempt from that because you're talking about preliminary design to full design to permitting the construction administration in the DPW world. That fails. Seventy-five to eighty percent of the time in communities where there is a preliminary design, full engineer, and then funding isn't approved or things of that nature. And that's kind of why it's like. Buildings tend to go that, that's why there's that horizontal vertical. Buildings tend to either pass or fit. DPW projects kind of have, when. You notice that, right? And that's why the procurement aspect is like a lot of times have a, have relationships with certain engineers for years and years, as we've had since they have the HP. You know, like I think about the tenants, they have different relationships with the firms. So this, this, although it does sound weird to me thinking about like the normal procurement procedures, this is, this is definitely.
I've forgotten the future part.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as long as I emphasize, this is what Justin had to kind of look at, but but it has, although it's been years, but Doug Gardner and and Justin had to cover the board. For sort of like preparing the town for these sort of investments through rate changes, which which the board has been. And that was not easy. The board is scrutinizing every step of the way. Um, but kind of knowing that this was on the horizon as we need to, to your point, David, we need to expand our water supply. This is, this is four A, you know, and next four. Um, and so. This is a big pill to swallow, but we, I I feel like we've seen it on the horizon. It is coming, I mean, at the end, especially as we look across the streets of the. But um, it's a bit of a long ways. Right? Thank God we got that opportunity too. So that's what helps us on that as well. And that's why we were able to phase one, phase two, make sure that we still did our permit. But this is one of those reasons where honestly, BPW projects take a lot longer than building a building. I know it sounds much more complex. You would think building a building is very complex. It's not. It's actually cookie cutter. When you're talking about dynamic aspects of interchangeable situations with treatment ways, piping, interments. These are long games and that's why the procurement aspect.
All long good. I wouldn't tell the fire station and the green metal building committee that those are cookie cutter projects.
I mean, from the way that it is, like once you.
I I understand, the process, not the actual construction of the building. Okay, that that's a.
Nature.
I I know what you meant. Chris, do you have any questions or comments?
No, nope.
Any any other questions or comments? On any of these four? So I believe we are back at eight B. Somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll move to approve the change order PCO zero zero two with Associated Construction Company for the well for a well treatment plant upgrade. Space on construction in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We will move on to eight. C.
I'll move to approve the change order PCO zero zero three with Stan Tech for well for a water treatment plant project in the amount of six hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Eight D.
I will move to approve the change order PCO zero zero four with Stan Tech for the well for a treatment plant project in the amount of two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And finally, eight E.
I'll move to approve the first one year extension in accordance with the previously approved contract one three three five with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated. For on-call miscellaneous engineering services for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know that was a long. Yeah, okay, Chris. Oh, thank you.
I said, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Oh, good night.
Good night.
All right, um, moving on to the reuse committee charge for sixty-one sixty-three Summer Street, uh, just to kick off the discussion here, I think what we will. Do, we've gotten some applications. I think we've gotten some more in. I think we've gotten some more in literally since we posted this meeting agenda. So. I think we'll collect all of them and and send up the board in advance of next meeting and we'll um use that hopefully to select. The membership uh that we're looking for. So we won't do that tonight, but we'll we'll collect all the material as we're still getting some.
Will we just get the letters that be extended, what we'll oversee?
As opposed to uh.
Will they, will these people be invited in to give thoughts, whatever, or is it just going to be looking at the letters?
And that's up to us to decide what we do for. You have a.
Probably having them here.
Any?
Or online.
Have a number. So like it, I don't have any room to now.
At least seven.
Right? And so, I mean, I like committees number one and five, that's my personal preference, but it's up to the board, of course, I need people who want on, so. Um, I mean, I. It'd be a lot of interview, all seven.
Yeah.
Top of, I'll probably have all the stuff I'm going to have you do, but.
Are they meeting our desire for diversity relative to experience?
I have not looked that closely to be able to tell you. Some of the names are familiar. I'm looking at a great, but he can remind you if you tell me. Something, some people why I haven't heard of.
They filled out the forms. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just. Wonder, I I don't want to spend. Uh, three hours interviewing people either, but I do want to give people opportunities beyond their written documents to tell us. Perhaps their thoughts and why they think it's important that their particular ideas be considered. So that we're not just looking at names. Yeah, that's, that's just my thought, but again, your call.
It's our call.
Chris, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm okay to skip it and wait until we have all the stuff in front of us.
Oh, uh, I think the the question David posed is should we expect to? Make the decisions based on the applications alone or at the next meeting? Should we invite all seven and possibly more individuals to come and talk when we're we're planning on looking at uh a committee around five? Or is there another, another possible way to sort through and make this decision?
If we only need five and we get seven, I guess we have to have them all come in and talk to them.
The five, the five is not, I didn't mean to like limit you, of course you're not limited, you know.
No, but on the line with the the thought process.
So if we have a number of people and the number of applications we receive. Surpasses the number, I I guess we have to either expand the committee. Or. Selects. Those that we think fits the, you know, fits our needs the best. I don't know.
I don't think we establish it is going to be a five person committee. We just, I think just the feeling is that five people works well. Because you can get everybody together and uh, it's easier to have a meeting. Trying to get. Here, I can't be here.
The other alternative is we can try to get the applications in to everybody sooner. And if you have questions for individuals, you can use your time individually to ask those people. You'll know some of them.
I would like this period, the entire board to hear their thoughts. That's the.
Trying to avoid a situation where we have seven people.
I understand.
You five are the selected ones.
So the other, the other part of that would be um that honestly that. Whatever we do at the next meeting is. Technically. Interview, I guess, or, you know, a few questions or meet the, meet the, meet the members, meet the potential members. And then we wouldn't actually decide until the following meeting. Because I also agree that it's very awkward to have all the candidates sitting in here. We're not, if we're going to decide, we're only going to use some of them.
That'll give us space for reflection as well.
Right.
In helping these situations. David thought?
I don't have an issue with that.
Chris?
That's fine.
All right. So we'll, we'll invite the members to come speak and we can question them and we'll have the applications and we'll get it at that point. All of us look at the full breadth of the experience. And then we will make a decision at the first February meeting and then kick this committee off. Um, then. The other aspect of this is the charge, which we can spend a bit more time refining. One, one comment did come in from the historic commission from Jack about making sure we. Um, have any historic aspects. I don't think they're um. Quite uh to the level that they were for the Coolidge School, but we're going to follow up and make sure we have. Captured appropriately if there are any. Historic considerations, um, but we'll. Figure out with uh the historic commission the best way to add that into the charge.
Do, and I'm sorry, do we know that there is the store?
Building itself. Designated as much. But.
But.
I just say, I didn't see the email.
No, so because I just had to stay, or well, I mean, I followed up to the many emails I got off of vacation, but um. I asked that question, like, to what level of like official or formality is? Um, because I didn't think it was as well. So Jack said it had been um registered within the. Maynard Historical Commission. And and had been submitted to the Massachusetts Historical Commission. I hope, I hope. But they did. Pointed out last email, he had, he did not know the status of that application and he was reaching out to Priscilla Sandberg, who may be able to know. So what I think, Jack, of course, and if I get that information, I'll pass it on.
But what I don't want us. To do. But what I don't want us to do, and yeah, I'm sensitive to the historical issues. But I don't want us by saying that we have to restrict based on historic issues. And take thereby take off the table potential options that may include things that.
Sounds like foolish, uh. Right. And so, yes, that was.
That take away the outcome from the, of the lesson.
Greg Johnson, I'm not, I'm not speaking for anyone else. The lesson from, from the Coolidge School reuse was, was here we are. After many years since trying to dispose of that property. And, and I'm not saying it was just because of the historical uh, restrictions. And I am also not trying to devalue that effort. I think it's important to, you know, for preservation of the, the historical aspects of the town. But it obviously created a lot of obstacles and delays. And I don't know, and I think it should be up to frankly. Greg Johnson would, would recommend it be up to the committee to say whether that.
Yeah. Included in that is there might be an option that whether or not it's not my personal thoughts here coming across or not. Maybe the, one of the options is that the building is destroyed.
Could be.
And if we have a restriction relative to, that takes any options relative to the destruction of the building off the table.
Right.
Um, I don't think we're talking about adding restriction. We just want to make sure one doesn't exist permanently.
At this time. But I think David is kind of looking down the road.
I see what you're saying, dude.
That's my interpretation that you're.
Yeah.
No, I don't think if there isn't a current restriction, I don't think we want to bind ourselves like.
Correct.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
But it's not, I think Jack's, Jack McKeen's original message was perhaps a recommendation is to have someone with some sort of historical. I don't know perspective, uh, and I think that is important.
I, I would agree.
Right. Okay, very good. So we'll, we'll construe all that in the wording as we.
Okay.
Follow up. Um, yeah, go ahead.
No, I was gonna, my, my recommendation, although you, as you, I think you already said, Mr. Chair, you don't have to do it today. But if you want to establish the charge, you can. But I, the charge is very simple. It doesn't get into any detail.
Yeah. Right. And that was, and some of that's about the charges. Some of that was about breadth of experience, which David already mentioned, for the. Um, people on this reuse committee, which, you know, is a, a long list. So we're going to try to touch as many bases as possible. Um, do we wish to discuss the charge or even set the charge right now?
Let's wait till next meeting.
Okay.
I'll, I'll come prepared with.
Any comments on it right now? It's a one, one sentence charge, so.
I was gonna say, it, it.
Yep.
There've been a lot of three options with Blackboard for reuse of sixty one sixty three Summer Street. I mean, in theory, that can be the charge. But I feel like we need to add a little bit more.
A little more peer instructions.
Right. But I don't know what that was.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And I, um. It may be that the committee, when it's formulated, actually has this input into what it's. How they envision that working, um, not what the ultimate result will be. And that comes from us. What we, what we want from them are three or five ideas.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's, that's the charge then, to be honest, because I don't think the committee should come up with their own charge.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, there may be a few, few ideas we can expand upon to make sure we're clear on what we're asking for and what we're not asking for, right? But I think, I think what we're not asking for is clear in, in the proactive framing of, you know, submit three options. It was like word itself, but we can.
Not asking.
So like.
Instruction.
Details like on LinkedIn or other, you know, additions to make clear what we're, what we're envisioning the output of this committee is could be helpful. So.
Yeah.
We can absolutely wait till the next meeting for the actual setting of that charge.
Even, even the description that's online says that you, you're, you're, the board is interested in volunteers that have been cited real estate, economic, community development, housing, facility management. Like, just kind of like say like, you're not limiting it one way or the other. Although you absolutely could, and, and in the charge, you can. Right.
Yeah, and I, I guess I want to make it clear, at least from my perspective, that um. It's not three to five ideas that mean keeping the building. It's not three to five ideas that mean destroying the building. It's not three to five ideas that mean. Has to include, uh, you know. I want it to be as, as open and, and exploratory and go down as many roads as they can. With nothing off the table. Anyway, similar to my concern with the fire station uh, property, that we don't limit it to just. The known quantity.
Chris, any thoughts on the charge?
Um, not necessarily. No, I, I, I kind of like the way it looks. I'm just, I'm just curious in, um, in terms of the conversation we're having about the historical aspect. Great. Do you know if there's a, a fast track way to find out whether or not that there is any um. You know, state historical significance to it, when the state places a historical significance?
Yeah, that's the great question. So I, I believe there is a registry and it might be hopefully accessible. Um, so the office side of that up. But I think Jack McKeen's on it. Pretty confident he's gonna, he's gonna come back soon again to tell me what there is. Otherwise, of course, we can look that up um, on our own. And or I can contact the Massachusetts.
Must be online.
I think the question is that there was an application that we had active or something. If it's accepted, then it's not updated. It wasn't. But we're, I think Jack McKeen and, and the rest of the historic commission is the correct group to go to.
Right. I guess the question is, to, to rephrase the question. Is there his, an historical restriction on the building? That's the.
Not, not, not that we're aware of right now, but we will double check just to make sure.
That's all.
Even, even I'd be curious to know what the historical commission even submitted as a potential restriction perhaps, similar to the Coolidge School, it was kind of like piecement. Wasn't, it wasn't very intimate. It was, there were some aspects uh, that had gotten more, you know, preservation valuable. Um, but I don't know, I don't know about the. I, I doubt that it's anything internal. Because of the renovations and, and the contracted use of the, of the copy allowed for art space to be able to make renovations and maintenance work in agreement with board. But the uh, envelope didn't really touch. So maybe that's what, if there's going to be any sort of preservation, it's probably limited to that, the exterior.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll try to get as much information as possible for the next meeting. And then I think we all take a homework item to review the one sentence charge. If there's any specific language we want added to it, then let's, let's discuss that at the next meeting so that we can walk away with the. A charge, if not ninety five percent of the charge that we can lock in at the following meeting with the membership. Cause I do want to get this.
Yeah.
Get this moving.
You guys can email, the board can email me and then I'll, I'll consolidate. So you don't have to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Very good. All right. Any other questions or comments on sixty one sixty three Summer Street? Okay. Uh, moving on to item ten, which is uh, support for local action units application for the LIP. Uh, at one fifteen Main Street. Uh, David, do you want to give us an overview of this one?
Well, what I can tell you is that the last meeting that the um. The trust had, they voted on moving forward with the, the lip agreement. And they were very limited. There were a few issues that came to the attention of the um, of the trust, but it really wasn't significant changes that were added. I was not at the meeting, but I, I was briefed. The uh, there was some concern that the. Deeded or dedicated affordable units were all, for example, unit one eleven, two eleven and three eleven. And which meant that the units would be exactly the same. And there uh, is a desire, even with affordable units, to have them be diverse. And not exactly the same. So they moved those around. That was not a problem. It was also an issue relative to uh, a raised issue anyway, relative to parking. Uh, you may recall back when we had the same similar discussion over at uh, orchestra. Some of the units that were needed affordable, we're not given opportunities to get garages. And that's unfair. They should have the same opportunity. Um, but they weren't given the garages at all, as a matter of fact, over there until there's some input. Not the same situation here at this building because the, there's no assigned parking. So it's first come, first served. So that was uh, addressed in that way. I think one issue that is um, important to bring up. Um, unrelated to the lip itself, but rather to how the affordability issue that we talk about a lot, you know, how we talk about how. The, they determine what the rates will be based on the income value of around. Uh, of our area. The market rates at this particular location versus the affordable rates, difference is a hundred dollars a month. Which means that we need to work with our legislature to get it so that it's more impactful. To have a, when you're talking about an affordable unit. Um, a hundred dollars a month wasn't going very far. Um, so, uh, but that's sort of something that came out of this. So otherwise, the board um, trust approved the uh, the lip application. It moved it forward and uh. Those are the comments that I have.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on this application? All right, I will entertain a motion then.
Uh, I move to approve the support for local action units application of the local initiative program. Lip submitted for one fifteen Main Street as provided.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that passes. And David, thank you always for your work on before President Trump. Uh, moving on to the Green Meadow School Building Project, and I believe Justine has an update for us on this topic.
I do. So um, since we last met. I've had occasion to speak with both uh, Terry Culver and uh, Phil Colombo, the OPM. Uh, had a couple of very productive conversations. The Green Meadow Building Committee meetings will now be recorded. Um, and posted online on the um, mainer.k dot. M A dot A twelve dot M A dot U S page under Green Meadow School Building Project with Community Forum star. So they'll be recorded and posted there. Um, the next meeting is the seventeen um, at five via Zoom, but right before our meeting at seven. Um, let me see, what else did I have? So schematic design is, I spoke a little bit more with um, the OPM regarding the schematic design. And um, when I talked about the fact that we had it in, you know, we had seen it in, in Google Docs. Um, that was what was uploaded in preparation for the vote back in December. So that is something that's going to change because now we have more time. Um, so I had some conversation with Phil and basically said that the way that the select board operates. Um, the timeline that they had set out unknowingly wasn't acceptable to us, which was that. You know, that, that basically the select board would see it. Three days before we would be expected to vote on it essentially. Um. So it's not tech, it's not normally, um. It's not what's typically done, but basically when the building committee gets the access to it, which is going to be about a month in advance, that's when the select board is going to get access to it as well. So then we'll be able to review it. We'll be able to, you know, have our questions answered. So we'll hopefully be able to move forward. With a firm understanding of what we're voting on. Um, and we'll be more comfortable with it. So we should expect that about a month before due, so. March, I think. Um, so that I'm, I'm happy with that.
March, do we already have the kind of draft version from December?
We do, but again, that I. So that one. Even though it's uploaded, I don't know how official it is because.
Right.
We don't know what's going to change. So.
Okay.
So there's that. Um. The, so the other thing about the schematic design is there has been some misunderstanding, part of it on my part regarding um, the purpose of the schematic design and what can be changed afterwards. So the schematic design. Essentially is a jumping off point. So what we're saying when we submit the, the schematic design is that we. Are saying we want something that looks kind of like this in kind of this location. However. Lots of things come to fruition after the schematic design. This is more the submission to the MSBA, so then the MSBA can tell us. What they're going to reimburse. So, and then from there, so we can't say, we can't submit a schematic design for a new school and then go back and say. Oh, by the way, it's going to be an addition running. But we can go back and say, you know what? We were going to do this HVAC system, but we've changed our mind and we're going to do this, or we're going to value engineer this down. Or we're going to do, we can do that stuff after the schematic design. All of that stuff comes after. So the initial submission.
On that point, my understanding is that it's much easier to. Contract from the schematic design than it is to expand because an expansion from this schematic design, anything that gets more expensive, the MSBA doesn't pick up.
Correct.
Although that's true, there's changes afterwards. We don't want to say this is our best guess and then expand.
Correct.
Because that's. Uh, funding that would fall one hundred percent of the town, none of which gets reimbursed by the state.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, the other part that was pointed out again, and I, I do understand, but one of the things that is obviously factored into this is a contingency. So in addition to the fact that. There was, you know, um, you know, as far as site work goes. There was the thirty five thousand cubic. Feet, maybe of, of earth that was prepared, you know, that they're estimating. They have also factored in contingencies for those types of things. So there is. There is a factor figured in, in case something else changes. So it is to protect the town. It is to protect the budget. If that makes sense.
Okay.
All right.
I have more questions, but I don't, I don't think, I don't think right now.
That's okay. And I get it. And I'm, and so, and my goal is to come back here pretty regularly. And try to explain what I have learned, because my, my goal is not to, and I know that I'm the one who brought up all of the questions that I had and I'm. Happy in the direction that we are moving. It doesn't mean that I don't have more questions. It doesn't have, it doesn't mean that I don't. I, that I, I'm not going to, you know, I'm going to keep asking questions. But my goal is not to second guess the OPM or the designer. Um, because I know that they know how to build a building. They know how to design a building and how to build a building. However, it is our job to advocate for the size of the building and for the cost of the building and for all of those types of. Aspects. And they can tell us what can be done, what can't be done, what they've seen done, et cetera. Um. So that was. That part of that. Um, we have a budget. But committee meeting this week. So we're going to be talking more about. You know, about the next steps for the schematic design. Um, we are going to talk about the MSDA Board of Directors did approve at their meeting revision, revision in the project funding limits. So one of those was um, from three hundred sixty dollars a square foot to three hundred ninety three dollars a square foot. Not a ton, but it's about a three million dollar increase um, in our. In our information. Um, and then they, they increased the um. Designer caps and they capped the site box. So. What the OPM designers are going to do is they're going to go back and they're going to reconfigure based on those numbers and then come back to us with those numbers as well. So that's what I have so far.
Okay, thank you. Chris, you're uh, also on that committee. Anything to add?
No, I, I was not part of those conversations, so.
Sorry, Chris.
No, no, it's okay. You're, you're part of a different, she, Justine's part of a different committee within that committee than I am, so.
This is the subcommittee, um.
Yeah, so, but no, it's, the next meeting is um, seventeenth, right? The five o'clock, so. I think we'll get some updates as to the, like, as Justine indicated, to the other conversations we've already had, but.
David, do you have any questions?
Probably have more to go on the fifteenth, seventeenth rather.
I'm sorry, what was that, Chris?
I said, I would think that. When we get to this point in the meeting on the seventeenth, that we'll have more to add.
Yes, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
No, I have nothing. I'm appreciative, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll add in, uh, thank you, especially for, you know, some of the items you mentioned at the beginning about the meeting recordings. Um, I think the minutes have been starting to be posted more regular. So thank you. I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. I, yeah, I'll, I'll just note that, again, they know how to build a building. Um, but there are local considerations, some of which Chris Orsono spoke to in our, in our December meeting. There is new technology that's being involved a lot and a lot of. Changing incentive structures that I'm, I'm worried that I just want to make sure we're capturing these. So.
Yeah.
I'll just add into that. So I, I still, I, my confidence continues to increase on this project from where it was a month ago. So I'll, I'll just add into that. So I, I still, I, my confidence continues to increase on this project from where it was a month ago. And that's great. Um, and still have some questions and I'll, I'll follow it up. So very appreciative of the update, so.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the Green Meadow Building project right now? Okay, all right, very good. Moving on to twelve, which is status for annual town meeting coming up mid-May.
Always, there's always one around the corner. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to have this, uh, just take the opportunity to remind people that, yes, there's a town meeting in May. And then, um, so the town charter does have a bylaws as well. Do you have a couple of, uh, deadlines? Um, but as we kind of leave, get closer and closer to town meeting, uh, the next one coming up, um, which the town administrator, me, Justice, I think it will be where to meet this like board's agenda, which is, uh, deadline for submitting all draft or articles to select board by town agencies, boards, committees, so town officials, which is not to be confused. So according to the town charter decisions, must be received at least sixty day party entering, so meaning that's March tenth. February twenty eighth is the date that I came up with, so that I can be prepared to provide those draft articles to the select board at your next weeks in March. Um, as opposed to the day of. Yes. Um, so right, but that, that information's already been distributed, uh, to town officials, boards, committees, departments. Um, you know, the select board has already heard from, uh, well, because you officially provided it back at the plane, planning board, a number of certain related articles. Um, and so we'll see what we get.
Any questions on the timeline or anything else on the lead up to town meeting?
I want to reiterate that it is, uh, Monday, May fifteenth is the date of the town meeting. Seven o'clock.
That's a Mr. Chair for, it's very.
Yeah, all right. Thank you for the update. Any other questions? Chris, you good?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. All right, uh, moving on to correspondences. Uh, I believe I already covered the main year, mainard senior center focus group and what has been happening there. Any questions on any of the correspondences or comments? All right.
One question?
Yeah.
One, um, I'm just curious, I mean, we've met, I know we've met with, um, Lloyd to hand before, I wonder if if there'll be an opportunity to have our new Congresswoman come and meet with us some night or speak to us via Zoom or whatnot.
I think we can, we can reach out. I know I had the opportunity to speak with her briefly, and then so did David at, uh, Representative Hogan's uh, fundraiser a while back. And so, uh, just nice to have her visit Maynard and, and understand a little bit more about who we are and physically come and see the town. So, uh, that's already been.
Certainly today and tomorrow, she's very good.
She's tied up.
So, yeah, we can absolutely look into that.
Yeah, I know, we're already connected with the, uh, Congresswoman Clark's office, so.
Very good.
I did want to also, um, thank, um, Congresswoman Trahan. I've had an opportunity to speak with her several times over the past few years. Um, she has made it, uh, made it to Maynard a few times. And, uh, I really appreciate her work and I really appreciate her advocacy for our town.
She's a, she's a great lady, but I don't think she ever came to town that she got good weather.
No, no, actually.
All the rains.
Chris Paul. DPW.
Yeah, that one, that one's cool.
Congresswoman Tron will still be next door, so she's still, will be still, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we're in a good position with, um, you know, not only our new Congresswoman that, if, with her leadership position, but also that Congresswoman Tron is not going to forget Maynard. And then uh, then both of their ties with Representative Hogan is also, uh, hugely, uh, beneficial.
And I, I did want to speak.
Go ahead.
No, we're going to do it.
I would actually agree with you pretty much and, and David.
Sorry. Um, I did want to speak, uh, one thing about the senior center focus group letter that they did send. Um, I, I did, I do hear the frustration. I do hear that, you see. Um, one thing that they noted in the, um, letter was that, um, they are frustrated because in nine years since the submission of the previous study group's report, funding needs have never been addressed while capital funding supported a new police station, high school and middle school. So the report, I believe, was in twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen that, that they're referencing. Um, and we funded the, uh, let's see, we funded the middle school in two thousand and three, the library in two thousand and seven, and the high school and the police department in two thousand and ten. So all of those actually happened before that report came up. Um, I also do want to say that, uh, as a member of, of the budget subcommittee, you know, we were able to hear that report, um, from the capital planning committee, that it is something that is on their radar. They are looking at every option for a lot of different items. There are a lot of different needs in town. Um, and I do want the seniors to know that they aren't forgotten. And it is not something that we take lightly. Um, there has been a lot of movement in the past few years and I'm proud of that. Unfortunately, sometimes it feels glacial. Um, but I know that we will be able to move forward. It's just a matter of trying to find the funding to make it possible.
I'll, I'll add on to that. We, as a town, over buildings that, you know, or could last seventy years, have built a lot of those within a very short timeframe relative to that. So, and, and many of those projects you just mentioned, regardless of whether it became a fore after or, or on the books right now. And so those are, those are things we're still paying down and finding ways to, um, you know, afford, afford everything is very difficult. All right. Any other comments or questions on the correspondences? All right, I'll entertain a motion. But we have D.
I will move to accept and approve correspondence, eight through D as shown.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We have two sets of minutes today.
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of December sixth and December twentieth, twenty twenty-two as shown.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the two sets of minutes? All right. Uh, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. And administrator report.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Um, I hope everyone had a good holidays, seemed to be safe and everyone came back to town hall that I saw, so. Appreciate everyone's hard work, especially as I myself was on personal time, so good to see everything was well in hand. Thank you, May. Great. Um, uh, the next time the town hall will be closed is an observance of Martin King Day, which is January sixteen. We are looking forward to the new website for the town being launched tentatively January seventeen. Um, but I, of course, as for the public's patience and cooperation as we, as we make that transition, um, a lot of the town staff has been trained on it. We've seen the, the current draft of the website, really looking forward to it. But of course, there will be bugs to be worked out. It's in growing pain, the variable limitation. One other is not what, so one large thing I wanted to note is, uh, I, I did meet my own personal um, obligation to have a balanced budget drafted before I went on vacation. It is, if you balance budget, it's, as I say, every year, probably not going to make a lot of friends. But that is the, that's how the budget works. So we're conservative revenue estimates and projections. And then, um, based on the probably less than ideal costs and expenses uh, that, that you, that you projected, that estimate, um, and you try to balance it too. So I kind of, I listed, and I'm not going to go now, but, um, my town administrator's report does list the highlights of that balanced budget graph. Again, heavily emphasized graph, um, which are in the town manager's report, which is both on Word docs and upon the town's website. Um, and we'll go from there. There's still a lot of information to, to find and, and research to do, um. So, you know, new growth is relatively conservative as, as far as revenues. Um, but I, it may be many months until I find out what the governor's, uh, budget proposal will be and what state it may come from now. It did have, uh, it, I know I said I'm not going to go over highlights, but I'll highlight one thing. It did, um, be with our health insurance consultants today, and they really stuck to that eight percent increase, uh, which is significant. Um, we've never budgeted, I, I don't say never, but my recollection, I don't think I've gone over four percent in the last four or five years. This will be my fifth. To be my fifth budget. And, um, so that's twice that.
But four or five percent being the final number often high comes low. You're saying it's starting high and stable, right?
Normally we can get more, more stuff.
Yeah, 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 precisely. Like it usually comes down. I mean, we'll see. So, uh, Maya, who's our, our provider of, well, actually we have food bar for shield, oh, but, um, at the, uh, Massachusetts National Association Annual Conference in like two weeks, three weeks, is usually when they give the range. Our claims haven't been so good. So if the range is five percent to twelve percent, then right now I'm estimating eight. We're already there. So see, I'll check that. Um, uh, a couple of other things I want to highlight from the town manager's report, um, really want to commend, uh, help director. Ivan Quagala. And I have a whole lot, um, promoting upboarding, uh, training, and, um, who, who was really appreciative of the town staff, police officers, uh, a number of other people that, that showed up. I think that's fantastic. It's a, it's a, it's a rather, um, um, not highlighted aspect of any, particularly a mayor. It's also something we talked to, of course, there's a lot of stigma to it. Um, but it does exist. And, and I think it's, I was really appreciative of, of the health director for highlighting that and really, um, bringing us on the same page. And, um, also like to see the stats from the library every year. So there's a, there's an energy report from the library about, um, books that have been checked out, the number of books that have been checked out. I think there's simulation or I can't remember the I think that's terminology, but the amount of books they checked out was sort of fifty-six thousand. I haven't heard, but, um, yeah, always fascinating, very active library. Love to see the reports. And unless there's questions, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any questions on the tenant minister report?
There's one other item, actually.
Yeah, the, um, MBTA.
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
So, um, the new legislation requiring MBTA communities to submit a plan for how they can um, meet a certain density of housing and so it's a kind of multi-step plan here or process here. Um, and the first step was that communities have to submit how they plan to, you know, reach this density. Um, and that plan needs to be submitted by the end of June. So Bill Nester has been working with the officials um, and exploring where we could meet this density in town, uh, what would qualify, what wouldn't. And so, and I think if you remember, we, we, we brought in, um, our town council to discuss it with the board. Um, provided comment. Um, so we did, we did submit our compliance, uh, report and it was accepted, I think just that um, from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And this is really critical because if Maynard did not have submitted this report and have it accepted, we would not be eligible for several of the grants, including so we're thrilled to have that incorporated. Um, and so the plan here is to use powder mill as our area for, to, to meet this, uh, that requirement for housing. And this is a, it's, it's kind of a win-win in a way because we already are working on this. This is already a focused development area in town. We have a grant with M A P C to work on this. It includes a lot of public outreach work. And zoning change will need, you know, the input will need to make sure, um, folks understand what this is and how it could impact property and that kind of development going forward. So we're well positioned with this grant to, um, you know, head and move forward in this direction. So we don't have to have money for another four years, but this was the first step in the tripping away at these requirements. And the state is really standing behind this and, um, as you know, uh, we're very reliant on these grants. So we really have to do what we need to do to stay in good places without the be eligible for these, um, for both on our, um.
Any questions?
No. Thank you very much, Megan and the.
Charlie.
All right. Any other comments on either the tenant minister report or the MBTA community update? All right, very good. Uh, moving on, I have nothing for the chair report today. Just I hope everybody had a, a nice holiday and welcome back. Looking forward to working with everybody in the new year. Uh, we'll go to board member reports. Justine?
Um, I don't have too much. Also, happy new year to everyone, uh, prosperous twenty twenty-three. Uh, I know that, that we have the, uh, building committee I had mentioned before, the green metal building committee on, uh, the seventeenth at five o'clock. I believe we also have a budget subcommittee meeting next week, uh, next Tuesday on the tenth, uh, seven o'clock as well. So, um, other than that, that's right now.
David?
Um, I really don't have much to share tonight. I didn't want to comment. I did see that, uh, and I believe uh, Justin had mentioned it at our last meeting, it is part of the complete streets, I think it was, uh, program that we had some additional funding that allowed us to put in those crosswalk and signs over near the Boys and Girls Club at the intersection across from the, uh, the football field entrance and the Boys and Girls Club. And they are up, I saw them today. And, uh, hopefully, um, that will make that, well, that location much safer. Um, sometimes, especially when there's an event going on over there, it's impossible to see people uh, that are passing the street, like the fact that's police officers there, hopefully. Uh, that's good news. I think partly was, was responsive to public desire for safety in that particular location. And just, uh, the residents can see the reaction of the town hall staff, DPW staff who, um, issues that have brought to our attention. I think that's good, but that's it.
Very good. Chris?
Yeah, I, I just had one, um, item to talk about, but it's kind of the, the, it was answered in the, in the review of the minutes. It was the conversation we had two meetings ago about the human relations committee charge, membership, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't know. I wasn't under the, I wasn't under the impression that we wouldn't suggest we post a meeting, but, um, I was pretty sure we had a conversation about not adding members and whatnot until we all had a chance to meet with those members of that committee that are still in play and have a conversation about direction and, um, and whatnot, in the scope of the committee going forward. And then, which would then, you know, lead to, uh, having other conversations on that board about new membership. This was my recollection. The minutes kind of confirmed that, but in the meantime, I'm, I'm seeing emails talking about the same name that was suggested before about a student that's not from town, which I don't, just don't see any value in having a student from outside of Maynard as part of the main and human relations committee. I thought we talked about that last week and the conversation was to, um, you know, have a meeting with that board before that took place, but apparently not. So I just wanted to, you know, let, you know, just kind of put that out there that that's what's going on with that committee, which is typical of how it's been for a long time. And that we have a meeting coming up and I'm just going to discuss that with that committee, just like I discussed with you guys. Just, I just want to let you guys know that's taking place.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Happy new year. I'm sweating. It's seventy-eight degrees here and down here. Nine o'clock, it's seventy-eight. I might not come home.
We feel so bad for you right now.
We'll send you some of our thirties. It's fine.
All right, uh, any other comments on anything? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yep.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, thank you.
I'm a yes for adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.